Good evening. Welcome to the May 17, 2017 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. At this time, I request that you silence any phones you have on you and then pledge, stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion to open the meeting, please?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Applications for rezoning and conditional use permit heard during tonight's meeting will be voted on by the Planning and Zoning Commission during the meeting. The Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendations on the applications will then be submitted to St. Charles County Council for their final decision on the items. The individual items and bills for these applications are scheduled to be introduced at the Monday, June 12, 2017 County Council meeting. Please note that the Planning and Zoning Commission's vote this evening on applications for temporary fireworks stands and preliminary plats is final. Only a recommendation for denial on these applications will be heard before the County Council. The following documents are introduced as a matter of record for the public hearing and regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Unified Development Ordinance of St. Charles County, including zoning maps, and the Year 2025 Master Plan for St. Charles County, which includes the Year 2025 Future Land Use Plan map. Okay, a little bit of business. One of the applicants, the very first one on the new agenda, CUP 1705, has asked for it to be tabled, and I need a motion on that.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then the last item, also, they've asked for it to be removed from the table they're going to present on it tonight, so I need a motion on that.
So moved.
Second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Give you a little roadmap for how the meetings go here at the Commission. What we do is we read the applicant, or the application into the record. We then ask staff for recommendations, or their recommendations on it. We then have an opportunity, the Commission, to ask questions of them. At that point, after we're done asking staff questions, we ask applicant to then come forward and present their, their application. We ask that the applicant take a little bit more time than normal when they're doing the application than, than the public. So they get a little bit more time, and I kind of want to let you know that. And then after the applicant has presented their, their application to us, we have an opportunity to ask questions of them. Once we're done with that, we open up to the public. Anybody can speak on any of these issues that have come before us, for or against. In fact, even the one we tabled tonight, if you, if you're here and that item was tabled, that first item, you can still come up and speak on it. It's the very first thing on the agenda. So just to clarify, you can speak on it. Is there anybody here in the room for that item? You are here? Do you, did you want to speak on it?
Yes.
Okay, hold on, we'll get to it then. I just want to make sure. And once we open it up to the public, anybody can speak on, on for or against. Please make sure you fill out a speaker's card, and try to keep your comments to about three minutes, too. We want everyone to have an opportunity, this room's kind of full tonight, so we want everyone to have an opportunity to speak. If it's something that's new, please come up and say it. If it's exactly the same problem, just say, you know, come up and say it. That's exactly the way that I feel. We want you to have an opportunity to speak. Once we close the public hearing, we have an opportunity to bring the applicant back up. They have an opportunity to answer those questions or concerns from the public, and we have an opportunity to ask more questions. Once that portion is done, we close it. We then have a chance to discuss it up here. If there's discussion on it, we can ask questions of staff, even bring applicant up if we need to again. Once that's closed, though, there's no more public comment on it. We then take a vote on it. Motion's second, and we vote on that issue. The only things that, that will go, all of these will go before the County Council, so even if tonight's doesn't go your way, you have an opportunity to go to the County Council, which is on...
June 12.
June 12, to present your case to them there also. So it has to go through a couple other readings there, and it has to go through two readings at the County Council, other than the fireworks stands and the preliminary plats, which will be voted on tonight. So that's kind of how it goes, and we're going to go ahead and get started. And our first item tonight is CUR 1702. If you want to bring that up for me, please. Oh, yeah, that's right. Hold on, you're right. I'm sorry. Bring up the other one, if you guys would. CUP 1705, because somebody wants to speak on that item. Do I need to read that into the record, if he's going to speak on it, since it's tabled? Okay. I'm going to go ahead and read it into the record then. It's a conditional use 17-05. Owner is John J. Silventon Jr. and Jacqueline R. Silventon, and it's Defiance Wine Company, LLC. The use requested is private club for wine education and wine experience. The property is Zone A Agricultural District with floodway fringe and floodway overlay districts. The area is 14.25 acres. It's on the south side of Defiance Road, approximately 1,800 feet south of Highway F in Council District 2. Do we do the staff recommendations on it when it's tabled or not? Okay, thank you. So if anybody wants to speak on this, they can come forward now. So if you want to come up?
I was on...
Come on up.
...02.
Come all the way up to the podium.
Yeah, I was on the 1702, the one that you tabled and you passed up. Can I speak on that? Which is the rehab facility?
Oh, no.
No, that's not, we haven't tabled that. That's going to be, come up for here.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah. This is for the wine thing. Does anybody in here wants to speak on that issue?
I do want to speak.
Okay, come on up. Yep. Raise your right hand for me, please. You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And state your name and address for the record.
My name is Steve Kohn, 8000 Maryland, Clayton, Missouri. I'm an attorney. I represent Chandler Hill Holdings...
Okay.
...which owns the property immediately adjacent to the property on which the application is proposing to do this private wine club.
Okay.
And I appreciate that this has been tabled. I don't feel that we've had a sufficient amount of time to really evaluate this, but I do want to point out a few things, just for the record initially. I did send a letter in, and I believe that, hopefully you have seen a copy of that. I was told that it would be distributed. And I would request that that be part of the record.
Okay.
So my client owns Chandler Hill Vineyards, which is a winery immediately adjacent to the subject property. The only access to the subject property is over and across an easement that is located on my client's property. The easement is roughly 400 or 500 feet long. It is described on the site plan that has been submitted to you as a 50-foot roadway easement, and that is exactly how it's described on the easement that's recorded with Recorder of Deeds office. But in reality, when you put your boots on the ground, what this is, is it's an eight-foot gravel road, maybe eight and a half feet, and it essentially was constructed as a dam that abuts a lake immediately to its south. And this gravel road is elevated. There are no shoulders. It is impossible for there to be two-way traffic on this road. To the left, or excuse me, to the south, it falls probably eight or 10 feet directly into this body of water. To the north, it falls significantly more, maybe 20 or 30 feet into a ravine. To travel across this gravel road in broad daylight on a sunny day would make anybody nervous. I've done it, it makes me very nervous. It is unlit, there are no utilities. To travel across this gravel road in the evening, when there are no lights, or in inclement weather, especially when somebody is under the influence of alcohol, which is the whole point of this conditional use, it's a private wine club. It, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to realize that this is very, very dangerous. Somebody falls into that lake, it's pretty obvious what the possibilities are. Somebody falls off the other side, it's pretty obvious. There is no way for two cars to pass each other on this road. So if one car is coming in at night, and one car is coming out at the same time, you meet halfway. I would be terrified to try to navigate this road in reverse. I think the safety hazards are obvious. Now, I realize that this is characterized as a private wine club, as opposed to some sort of a commercial enterprise, but in terms of the practical effect of what's happening, that's just a matter of semantics. To join this club, I assume that, you know, you pay your 10 bucks, or your 20 bucks, or your 50 bucks, you sign up online, and it's basically available to the general public. So people in the general public are going to be encouraged to travel across this road on my client's property, which obviously is potentially subject to significant liability, let alone the safety of these people who are, who are driving across this road. So it's our intent to further investigate this, you know, potentially even hire an expert to, you know, to prepare a report on this, because we think this is a very, very, very serious issue. And if this conditional use permit is granted, I think there could be catastrophic consequences. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to speak on this issue? If not, we'll go ahead and close that portion of the, and Steve, just so you know, you know that will come up the next time, too.
I understand, thank you.
Okay. So let's go on to the next one. So our next one is a rezoning, CUP, CUR 17-02, Zimmer Family Properties LLC. The applicant is Bax Engineering Company Incorporated. The current zoning is R3A Medium Density Residential District. The requested zoning is R1E Single Family Residential District. The use requested is a two-story, 44,550 square foot institutional building with 101 space parking lot. The area is 11.53 acres, and the location is on the south side of South River Road, approximately 425 feet east of Arena Parkway, and it's in Council District 7. Staff?
All right. On this application, you'll note on the maps when, when they go forward here, that it is two properties. One property is currently zoned R1E, the other property is R3A. What they are asking for is rezoning from R3A on the eastern property to R1E to match the western property, and then the entire two properties, they are asking for a conditional use permit for an institutional building on the property. The proposed use would actually be a residential facility to serve clients seeking recovery from addiction. The 2025 master plan that we looked at envisions that the land adjoining Highway 364, which is, you'll see, to the west portion of this map, that it should be a mixed use with parks, open space, offices closer to the, the actual Missouri 364. And then you'll also see that the Missouri River is on the southern side of this property, south of the Katy Trail, which crosses over the property, and this also serves as a buffer area. In reviewing the requested zoning change, staff did find that the, the requested zoning change is appropriate for the area, and also the conditional use permit application is also appropriate for the area. The Arena Parkway is right to the north of this property. It's separated by the South River Road and some other parcel of ground there, but it is, does also serve as a buffer area from, from single-family residential. With that, staff does recommend approval. We do ask for the standard conditional use permit conditions, that a site plan be substantially conforming to the concept plan that they did submit. We do have the concept site plan. If we can go forward on this, we'll, we'll be able to see that. But it must be submitted to the planning and zoning staff. No conditional use shall be active until all conditions of the approval have been met, and in any case where a conditional use is not in place and in active use within two years from the date of grant, granting and/or in accordance with the terms of the conditional use, then without further action by the Planning and Zoning Commission, it shall be declared null and void.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
I was just, one quick one. In the analysis, they had, the applicants could achieve their proposal either by rezoning the entire property to an R3B multi-family residential district in which it would be allowed by right, or rezoning to a single-family residential obtaining a conditional use permit. So they've chose, you've advised them, or they've chosen to go by the second option?
Yeah, they, they did have that option, and what they chose was to go back to the R1E. They don't want to hide anything on this. The single-family zoning works in this area. The R3A, if they had gone that direction, it would indicate that they were trying to develop multifamily usage of the area.
Okay. Oh, in our packet, we received a couple letters of objection. Have we received any other ones for the record?
Sheila, have we received any others?
There is one that...
Yeah, there's...
Yes, absolutely.
Just one letter.
Just one letter?
We are showing one letter of opposition.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, go ahead and bring the applicant up on this.
Oh, he wants us to do it. Okay.
Raise your right hand for me, sir. You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And state your name and address for the record.
My name is Cliff Heitman, excuse me, with Bax Engineering Company. Our address is at 221 Point West Boulevard in St. Charles, Missouri, 63301.
Go ahead, Cliff.
Thank you. Bax is the, the engineer of record for the Harris House, and I have a few other folks here that'll be stepping forward to go into a little more detailed presentation. I'm going to cover some of the engineering portions of that, and then some of the members with the Harris House will step forward and kind of explain their mission and how they would move forward. As staff mentioned, this is two, two tracts of ground on South River Road at Arena Parkway. For clarification, the 2706 South River Road property that's addressed is the Zimmer property, and that is currently zoned R1E. We're not asking for any zoning change on that property. The property that's to the east of that, that is not addressed, is owned by Riverview Bluff, 5.73 acres. It is, it is currently zoned R3A. That's the parcel that we are asking to rezone to R1E. And then we will be additionally requesting consideration for the conditional use permit on the entire 11.73, or 11.53 acres. We did meet with staff early on in the process, talked about the various options in terms of zoning. I know a question was, was brought up regarding that, and we did, we were very open and very much in agreement with the conditional use permit on top of an underlying zoning of R1E. We felt that gave staff opportunity to put some conditions, this commission opportunity, and even the council to put some conditions on this property that they felt they could control what was going on there. So we were willing to, to zone that property down to an R1E base, essentially downzoning the piece that's currently multi, or a medium-density residential. As, as was mentioned, this would allow for the development of the Harris House facility. It's a two-story, 44,550 square foot building. It would have an associate, with associated parking, fencing, utilities, detention, et cetera, all the things that you will see on a site plan. There's a concept site plan that is part of the presentation that you'll see here in just a few minutes. I would also like to mention, we did have a meeting about a month or so ago with the neighbors. We sent out notices to all the folks that would have been noticed, received public notice for this meeting, held the meeting at the library to get some input and feedback from them. We did incorporate some suggestions of theirs and some concerns of theirs into the site plan, and some of the changes that are on that site plan, you'll see as that's presented here in just a little while regarding positioning of the building, some fences, some buffering and screening and those sorts of things. Again, the details of the building and the site plan, you'll see in just a minute. At this point, I'd like to bring up and introduce Ms. Becky Marsh. She is the board chair for Harris House. She's going to tell you a little bit about their story and mission, and then we'll get into the presentation.
Any questions for Cliff?
Yeah, I have one. The, now, this is a little bit outside the realm of the property per se, but the, the ingress and egress of the property, I mean, that's a little bit of a, of a tight curve coming in off of the, the parkway there, and also, if you'd go the other way, there's a lot of blind curves and things like that. Are there, are you aware of any kind of improvements that are going to be done to the infrastructure for facilitating that? Because it's going to have a fair amount of traffic in and out of it.
And you'll hear about that. The traffic is relatively minimal. The residents don't leave and go and leave on a daily basis. They do have about 40 employees. We were in talking with staff, not anticipating improvements to Arena Parkway. We would use that access point for the South River Road that's onto Arena Parkway now, but at this point, we're anticipating, based on conversation initially, to make improvements. Now, as we move forward into more details of the site plan, if, if a traffic study or staff concerns would warrant some improvements there, we would have to incorporate those into a more detailed site plan. At this point, again, we have a conceptual site plan, conceptual building layout, and are seeking to take the first step in terms of the rezoning and the conditional use to, to see if this, this project can move forward.
And the other question I had was, the 44,000 square foot facility, how many residents would that house?
I'll let Mr. Wickenhauser address that, if I could, in just a few minutes. He has some of the details of the inner workings of the building and how they operate, if that would be okay with you, sir. I'll defer that for just a few minutes.
Okay.
All right.
Raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And state your name and address for the record.
Becky Marsh. My home address is 2010 Lake Clay Drive, Chesterfield, 63017.
Go ahead, Becky.
As Chair of the Governance Board of Harris House, I'd like to thank you all for the opportunity to be here and present tonight. We'd like to share about our mission, our program, and certainly share details about the project we hope to complete here in St. Charles. Harris House is a local nonprofit. We were founded in 1961. Our board is comprised of dedicated women and men who are active, engaged citizens in communities throughout our region. The primary purpose of Harris House is to help alcoholic and chemically dependent people achieve sobriety, so that then they have the chance to develop into productive and healthy citizens. Simply stated, our primary purpose is to save lives. Unless you have questions for me, now I'd like to introduce Tom Wickenhauser, who's the CEO of Harris House. Tom will provide you details, not only about our program, but also about our facility.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Raise your right hand for me, sir. You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name and address for the record.
Tom Wickenhauser, 207 Kendall Bluff Court, Chesterfield, 63017.
Go ahead, Tom.
Okay. Thanks, hi, everybody. I am CEO of Harris House, and I have a short PowerPoint that I will go through quickly.
Okay.
And basically, it'll tell you who we are, what we do, and how we go about doing it. So it's short, I'll talk fast, let's get started. Our mission is simple. It is to help people who have chemical dependencies get through to the other side, people who want to change their lives. We do that, we save lives every day, we love saving lives every day. Harris House, 56 years in operation. We are CARF accredited. CARF is to treatment centers what JACO is to hospitals. So it is the accreditation agency. We are licensed by Missouri Department of Mental Health. We're 5013C nonprofit and a United Way Agency. We serve 800 clients total annually. I guess the bottom-line bullet point is most important here, that we're run by a local board, we provide local jobs, and we try to keep all levels of addiction treatment affordable for people in the area. This is probably my most important slide, because it shows you our business model. On the left side, we are, is our nonprofit mission. We have 88 transitional housing beds that are really for longer-term clients. It can go up to a year. On the right side, now, that, that program on the left is at South Broadway. We plan to keep it at South Broadway and grow it at South Broadway over time. On the right-hand side is our intensive inpatient program. That is the program we are proposing bringing to St. Charles County. That is our revenue generator. We currently have 29 beds in that program. We are building a facility that, or planning on building a facility that can accommodate 60 beds, so growth over time. This shows the four programs that we do, and the one on the left here, the intensive inpatient, that's the program that we're talking about relocating to St. Charles County. I don't have time to go into the details, but I do have this PowerPoint on paper version, if you would like to read it at a later date. The program on the right side is our traditional housing, transitional housing program, 88 beds, stays on South Broadway, no plans to move it. The two programs in the middle, PHP, partial hospitalization and intensive outpatient, those programs do not require beds. Those are, come in for the day treatment only and then go back home at night. The IOP program is currently housed at Highway 40 and Mason Road at a different facility than our main facility. It's only the program on the left that we are talking about and planning for moving to St. Charles County. I threw together some statistics. Total clients into the inpatient program only, the one we're talking about for St. Charles, 450 clients annually, two-to-one ratio of insurance clients versus self-pay, two-to-one ratio male to female, age all over the board, typically a younger age demographic, racial statistics, drug of choice statistics. Yes, alcohol is still number one that we treat, because it is legal, and I won't say any more than that, except it's still number one. Although, you see that opiates are second, it's really gone up from 32% to 35% of what we treat, because the heroin epidemic is real, and it is happening. On the right, you see all the insurance companies that we are in network with. This is what Harris House is not. The program that we're bringing here is not any of these things. It's not a halfway house, it's not a homeless shelter, it's not a state-funded facility, but I'm not knocking state-funded facilities, they save lots of lives. But that's not what we are. We're not a mental health facility like CenterPoint. CenterPoint does have a CD, about a 30-bed CD wing, but we are not a mental health facility. That's not what we do. We are cutting-edge addiction treatment. That's what we do. Our client population is typically middle-class people who have private insurance or self-pay. Our 28-day program costs $9,500. We, this, the next part is what makes us different from a state-funded facility. We screen clients. We can do that, because we don't take federal or state funds. So we have, we do not accept clients with violent history, no known psychosis, no criminal history other than substance-related, no suicidal ideation, we're not mental health. And we don't take mandated clients, because we don't want anybody to come into Harris House inpatient who doesn't want to be there. We only want people who are serious about trying to get better. Our treatment method is called holistic, and basically that means we combine three things simultaneously. Medication management, mostly, that's anti-craving during the initial detox phase. Mental health therapy, which is typically cognitive behavioral therapy for depression and anxiety, and 12-step... and anxiety, and 12-step, all working together. We have 35 hours per week of scheduled treatment classes, educational groups, process groups. We keep people busy and challenged seven days a week. Detox and other medical issues are overseen by physician and full-time nurse, 14 state-licensed mental health therapists. We like to keep it busy, engaging, challenging for the people that want to be there so they really can get better. Our outcome measurement numbers are good. I put together a couple of our rules just to give you a flavor for how we do it. Wake up is at 7:30 for meditation, lights out at 11:00. Important piece, clients do not leave premises without staff escort. Clients cannot bring vehicles to Harris House. They're brought in by their family, dropped off when they're admitted, and then family comes to get them when they are discharged. And again, if we take off-premise to a doctor's appointment, to a pharmacy, whatever that might be, staff drives and takes them. Outdoor breaks on our premise will be discreet. I'll show you what that'll look like. We're talking about a fenced-in facility. We are not talking about chain link fencing. We're looking at, or at least I'm hoping for, I haven't gone through zoning, but we're hoping for wrought iron, black wrought iron-looking decorative fencing that is lighter weight than wrought iron, but for cost purposes, but it should look really nice. It does on our current facility. Security cameras, 40 employees during the day shift approximately, and then second shift is eight employees, third shift, eight employees also. Again, clients have no vehicles. We have an average of one admission a day. Some days, we may have three or four, but the average is one, and also an average of one discharge a day. We're not high-traffic volume. We did engage an architect for the preliminary phase here. They did a quick rendering of what we think is going to be a first-class-looking facility. It may not end up looking exactly like this because we have to go through the zoning process and we haven't gotten construction bids, but we want a modern, beautiful facility. We did get floor plans. First floor, this side is really, the right side is really all offices. The left side and the center is large meeting rooms. Second floor is where all client rooms are. There are 30 rooms, two clients per room. It's kind of typical in the industry of intensive inpatient. This is the site plan that we have come up with. Left side is the Arena Parkway side, right side's Riverside. You can see that what we're trying to do is make this as green a space as we can and as beautiful a space as we can. We are leaving all of the existing greenery on, like, all four corners, as you can see. There are some old growth trees as you drive in. The bottom, let's see, my pointer's where, this is the, this would be the entrance around to the front of the building and then around to the exit here. These are old growth trees we would plan to leave in place. I believe we have another group of old growth trees that are here that we've planned to leave in place. This building is two-story, roughly 45,000 square feet. You can see the shape of the building provides us with a courtyard here. This is where clients would be taking their daily breaks, morning, afternoon, and evening from classes and one-on-one treatment. Men on one side, women on the other side. Originally, this building was shown a little further this way. As if you see some elevations of this property, you'll see right along this line here, approximately, there's a steep drop-off going all the way down to the KD Trail. We have moved, the building has been moved back, and I'm going to say roughly 30 to 40 feet, so that our clients taking breaks here cannot see visually the KD Trail from the courtyard area, and people from the KD Trail cannot see our clients. We want to keep it as low-profile as we can because that's how we do our job. Okay. Really, that's about what I prepared for presentation.
Okay.
If you can do questions, we're good.
Any questions for Tom?
Yes, sir.
From my understanding, this is totally privately funded?
Yes, sir. No state or federal funding.
You mentioned security and lights. I know some of the concerns with neighbors. Is there a locked gate and comings and going, people checking in, coming in into the facility and leaving?
You know, we, honestly, we haven't gotten that far as to the details of how we would, whether we would have a gate that opens when you leave automatically or how we would do the details of it, but we do currently secure our facility every evening at lights out at 11 o'clock and open up usually about 5:30 in the morning.
And you made a comparison, CenterPoint, I assume that's the one at 94 and Highway 40?
Yes, sir.
And you're nothing like that at all?
CenterPoint is known to be the, really, the only mental health hospital in the St. Louis metro area.
But they're treating drug and?
They do have a 30-bed?
And alcohol.
Yeah, chemical dependency.
Right.
But that's not their main job. So, the clients that go to CenterPoint typically are going to have a severe mental health illness. We're not equipped to deal with that. So, I refer a lot of clients out to CenterPoint because if we're dealing with psychosis, that's not what we are there to do. We will occasionally get clients in that are undiagnosed that we will then diagnose. Generally, that's a referral to mental health for stabilization.
One last one. What was your rationale that you chose to come out and look at this in St. Charles rather than expand where you are now?
Well, we were pretty well expanded as far as we could in, on South Broadway, but we did a scattergram of all of our clients in the inpatient program over the last three years, and right about the midpoint of that scattergram is right about where we're at. So, there's an area of maybe three or four miles where our clients centered. We get clients from all over the metro area, but that's the midpoint, and that's why we looked at this area. That's the big driver.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
You have questions for Tom?
I have a question, too.
Yes, sir.
Do you, what if a parent brings a child in? Are they eligible? They might be under duress somewhat?
It's, yeah, it's a great question. The answer is, it's a specialized treatment for under 18s, and we do not specialize in that, so we do not do it. If it's 18 and above, we will accept.
Okay. I, we, part of the documentation we received was a letter that was written by a person who was against this, and he said that you told them that your success rate for treating these type of individuals is quite low.
No, I didn't.
Is that true?
Our success rate is great. I would challenge any other inpatient addiction treatment program to compare their results to ours. Even, what we used as our benchmark originally was the published results of Hazelden in Minnesota. Our results have consistently equaled or exceeded theirs, and they are like the gold standard in the business. Typically?
What is that, by the way?
What is that percentage?
Typically, we are getting an average of about 54% clinical non-recidivism, which means after one year after clients are released, then the survey goes on out to nine years after clients are discharged, and 54% have remained clean without an incident. Another 17%, 18% have relapsed but have been connected with 12-step, come back in and are clean at time of survey. So, we're averaging in the 70% of people that are clean when we go out and check. Our last survey, we made, I think it was around 2,000 contacts with former clients. We survey once a year because if you can't measure it, you can't manage it. And so, we try to keep in touch with our clients to see how they're doing.
How do you do that? Just curious if somebody moves out of the area and they move to California or Colorado and?
We can't find everybody. We can't find everybody, but how do we do it? We get a crew, well, our surveys are run typically by second-year practicum students from Wash U grad school in social work specializing in mental health therapy. And then, I will assign them some staff members to help make the calls because there's a ton of calls to be made, and usually you'll find people in the evenings. That's the best chance to get them, and so, we call because we have to know.
Any other questions? Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anybody else in the applicant that's going to speak on this before I close this portion of it? If not, I'm going to go ahead and open up that public. So, now the public can come up and speak on this for or against. Again, try to keep your comments to three minutes. Also, if it's the same concern that you have, just come up and say, yeah, it's the same thing as the person before. We want people to have an opportunity to bring up anything new that is related to this issue. So, it's kind of a free-for-all at the beginning, and so if you just come up and we'll swear you in one at a time if you're ready to speak. So, come on up, whoever's ready.
Who else is going to do it? I'll do it.
I'm sure other people are going to speak. Raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth and not to bet the truth?
I do.
And state your name and address for the record.
Mark Kaufman, 7405 Wellington Way in St. Louis.
Go ahead, Mark.
First of all, I think it's a very nice mission that Harris House has and that their goals are very nice things that they're trying to do. My concern is where they're putting it. I own the apartments with some other people directly across the street. I've been in the real estate business since 1973. A few years ago, I bought a bunch of lofts downtown, and in the building immediately west of our building, they decided that they were going to put 80 veterans that had been, that had been dry for a while, they were rehabbing from alcohol use, and they said that everything would be fine and that these people had been checked out and that things were going to go well. It did not go well. What happened was that?
When you say "they," who's "they"?
Yeah.
This was an organization, there was an organization that put them in, and I'm not sure, there was certain affiliation with the St. Patrick's Center, which is down in that area. But there was a private owner that leased them.
But you're not talking about Harris House didn't do this?
No, I am not. I am not talking about Harris House. I have not had it.
Were those long-term residents or turnover?
To tell you the truth, I don't know. I think that they were, it was a particular group. Our experience was that we had an adjacent lot where cars were being broken into and there were assaults to some of the condo owners that I think did not hap, didn't happen before, and I think it wasn't coincidental. And just the perception that there is a drug rehab facility across the street and in this area is going to depress real estate values and, I believe, has the potential to increase crime. And communities are doing everything they can to decrease crime and increase property values. Why you would go out of your way to make a zoning change that would allow a use that could lower the property values and increase crime in the area, that doesn't make sense to me. Go to an area where there's not homes around, there's not apartments around, there will be 70% of the people, it sounds like, are rehabbed, 30% are not. I don't, I don't know whether they're going to be wandering around in the neighborhood or what's going to happen, but it did happen in my other venture. That's why I'm here.
Yeah, it's not the same. It's not the same.
Yeah, and it was not them, no question about that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else want to speak on this matter? Raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth and not to bet the truth?
Yes, I do.
And state your name and address for the record.
I'm Angela Wheelahan. I live at 3205 Springdale, St. Peters, Missouri, 63376.
I'm sorry, the first name?
Angela.
Angela.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm here to speak on behalf of this. I have a 21-year-old son who is a heroin addict. He's not a violent criminal. He started out on pain medicine, and December 14th of this past year, my son went to CenterPoint in July, and CenterPoint wouldn't keep him. They kept him four days and said, "There's nothing we can do, insurance won't cover him." And they let him out. My son continued from July until December. I didn't know what to do. I tried calling Bridgeway, and they have a long list. I'm in insurance, I have money. I mean, I don't have a ton of money, I'm a teacher, but we have money to pay, we have insurance, but I couldn't find anybody that would take him. Some people told me just let him suffer for the weekend. And if you've never had a loved one who has any kind of chemical addiction and watched that, it is painful. So, I have a friend and I called them and they got me in touch with somebody on the board at Harris House, and that person made a call, and that evening, an hour and a half later, my son went into the STARS program, and that's what they're initially talking about, is the STARS program. And that program saved my son's life. They have family treatment as well. So, on Wednesdays and Saturdays, my husband, their father, we all went up from St. Charles two days a week to sit for three hours, I think it's three hours, nine to eleven, two or so hours, and we got treatment as well as to how to deal with what was going on. They detoxed my son appropriately, so he didn't, he went through all the things that you go through with detox, but he detoxed appropriately. They made sure that he was busy every day, every day that boy was busy. He learned to get up, he learned to make a bed. It is safe, the doors are locked. I, my son went to the IOP, he went to the OHP, he went to the transitional home, and he stayed there. And he eventually moved out. He's got five months sober now, just a couple days over five months sober. They embedded him in Alcoholics Anonymous and got him a sponsor, and he's working the 12-steps, and he's a productive member of society. He's still got some things he's got to take care of, but he's got a job, he goes to work every day, he pays his own rent now. He moved into a different facility, he's left Harris House, he's got to be able to move into a different, that's what we want. We want to rehabilitate these people. They're not all violent criminals, and he lives in a halfway house now, and he is accountable, and he is making changes to become a young, the young adult that we want our society to be. I can't, I can't say enough about the program. I understand that people have their reservations. I know that a lot of people have misconceptions about what an alcoholic or a drug addict are. They're, they're really, they're really not violent criminals. I, I love Harris House, and it saved my son's life. And if it can save someone else's life, because if you live in St. Charles, you know we have an awful heroin epidemic, an awful heroin epidemic, and alcohol for young people. So, I would encourage you to look beyond a property value. I'm not saying that that's not important, but a life, to me, is more important. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anybody else? Raise your right hand for me, please. You swear to tell the truth and not to bet the truth?
I do.
And state your name and address for the record.
My name is Joy E. Best. My address is 3228 Yale Boulevard here in St. Charles. I own a one-acre lot on South River Road, just sharp, well, within the 1,000 feet from the Harris House. I strongly, I am very, very strong supporter for the Harris House. I know what she feels. I lost somebody. He tried desperately to get into a place, and had this available, he may still be alive today, so I speak in support.
Thank you, Joy. Anybody else? Come on up. Raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth and not to bet the truth?
I do.
And state your name and address for the record.
Leonard Matheson, 188 Woodland Place Court, St. Charles, 63303.
Go ahead, Leonard.
I'm a psychologist, live right across the street from the planned development. I taught at Wash U, I'm a psychologist in Chesterfield, referred people to Harris House. House over the last twenty years, probably half a dozen folks, because it's a high-quality program. I trust what they do, I encourage my, my clients to trust what they do. And just speak in support of a quality program. If we're gonna have a program in this county, this would be a real gem, as far as I'm concerned, from a professional standpoint.
Any questions for Leonard? Okay, no, you do, Tom? No. Thank you. Anybody else? Come on up.
Hello, I'm Frank Yocum.
Raise your right hand, please. Swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And state your name and address for the record.
Frank Yocum, I live at 172 Woodlands Place Court. And I'm here, I have a concern. First of all, I think that Harris House, I'd like to see them in St. Charles County. I just don't think that this is the most appropriate location for them. I think something that would be a little bit more rural, away from subdivisions, would be better. I mean, there's a reason that, that there are walls, that type of thing. But I'm actually here talking about another concern I have. Is it alright if I pass out some pictures to you?
Sure.
One concern that I have is, it's my understanding that the development calls for a detention pond, which will channel water runoff underneath Arena Parkway, and then eventually goes into the creek. And am I, am I right about that?
Just, Frank, just go ahead and dress us, we'll bring those up.
It's my understanding from, from a meeting that we had about a month ago, that that would be the case. And my concern is that if you'll take a look at the pictures that's being presented there, that, that I understand it's a detention pond and not a retention pond, that, but we're having a lot of creek problems right now. And the last thing we need is, is more water to go and create soil erosion. So what's happening is that if that be the case, that it is going to actually be tunneled underneath Arena Parkway, fall into the creek, and then, and then the creek is going to take more water. The problem that we have is that, that quite frankly, it will bend around the apartment buildings, or that property, come by Whispering Oaks where we live, and then, and then what the problem that we've always had, I've been there for ten years, and what we've always had is problems with trees coming into the creek, damming up the creek, and then, and then you have no flow. And it makes for stagnant water, and mosquitoes, that type of thing. And so, and then what it does, it floods the low, the low-lying area that surrounds the creek.
Frank, just one second. Alan, could you put the map up there, so you can show us exactly where the pictures were taken?
And Frank, you live in the apartments, are the townhomes down at the bottom?
No, I'm in, I'm in the villas.
Okay.
I'm in the villas, I'm at 172.
Okay.
And so, you can see where it cuts around, you can see where the villas are right there.
Right.
The creek actually...
Runs right behind them.
If you look at this, the creek, it's hard to see on that, but basically what it does, it makes a U, comes around to the villas, need to go up. Okay, goes around, yeah, around the villas, and if you look, yeah.
Frank, Frank.
At the top is 172.
I'm sorry, you gotta stay at the podium.
I'm sorry.
I can't, we can't.
Okay, okay. If you look all the way at the top, 172, that's my villa, right up there, right at the top, right there. Okay? The creek comes around, it actually makes, makes it two right turns there. Every time it makes a turn, that, with or without them, I mean, basically, that, it dams it up on its own. One of the other things is, in, in twenty thirteen, we had a tornado, which swept right into the creek bed, came up over and into, to our subdivision. A lot of us, I mean, a lot of us had, had to have new roofs, and we had to have those replaced. If you recall, Family Arena actually had damage, if you remember, a few years ago. What caught, what happened then, is that, that it damaged a lot of trees. It took down a lot of trees at that time because of the tornado that came into the creek. Then what happened, it created so much damage on the existing trees, and you're still having the trees die, and so on. Right across from my, my unit, there is, it's, it's a low-level place, right there by the creek bed. It's a level, I'm up, probably thirty feet up high, I'm not worried about getting flooded.
So Frank, can we ask some questions?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Okay. Because, again, you're kinda gone past your time limit on this.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
You've got a creek problem.
We have creek...
You had a creek problem before.
But we have, but we have more, we have more now because of the tornado.
But you're understanding, let me ask you a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're, you're thinking that this might cause more problems, right?
Exactly.
Okay.
And, and so, so we don't need any more water into the creek.
Okay, so, we're gonna ask them those questions.
I'm sorry?
We're gonna ask them those questions, that's what this is for.
Okay.
We're getting input from the, from the public.
Okay.
We then ask them to come up and talk about it, and we ask them questions about those issues, so...
Okay.
Yeah. So, anybody else have any questions for Frank? Okay, thank you.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thanks for your time. Anybody else in the room? Come on up. Raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And state your name and address for the record.
Ken Castagna, 152 Woodland Place Court. And it would be easier if they could put up the picture that shows their parking facility, where their parking lots are gonna be, is that possible to show it? It would be a lot easier for me. Right. Okay, my concern is, is what this gentleman said about the traffic gonna be bad. If you notice, they have parking spaces on the, on the underneath part, they're probably for staff, they have parking spaces in front for public people that are gonna be there. But they made another parking all the way down there. Concrete asphalt is very expensive. You're not gonna spend that kinda money to make a parking lot unless somewhere in the future, you're gonna have another building there. So everything they're saying is gonna be doubled, somewhere in the future. Or they wouldn't spend money to make a parking lot like that.
Okay.
Okay, my second thing, I was an area coordinator for the Special School District of St. Louis County, but before that I was a teacher. I had crips, bloods, disciples. I had a black girl from Chicago that was meaner than all of them. But if you tried to help them, they would respond, and you could see approval. I also had white kids, and most of them were from high families, economy, and when they wanted drugs, there's nothing you could do. They wanted the drugs. And one other thing I wanna point out, the only reason you put a fence around something is because you either wanna keep something in, or you wanna keep something out. And, you know, there's a lot of kids that use that Katie Trail, there's a lot of families that use that, and they can't guarantee that somewhere down the line, something's not gonna happen.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room? Come on up. Raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And state your name and address for the record.
My name is Stephanie McKeon. I live at 180 Woodland Place Court in St. Charles.
Go ahead, Stephanie.
Okay, I, as quite a few before me, we're all neighbors, in Whispering Oaks. I have sold real estate for thirty years in St. Charles County. I think Harris House is a wonderful facility. I think they do good work. I checked into it prior to receiving the letter, or right after I received the first letter. My concern is, after selling real estate in St. Charles County for thirty years, and watching the ups and downs of the real estate market, that condominiums will be the last to recover, as far as the market is concerned. And my concern, as a property owner and as a Realtor, is that I'm trying to understand why they're going to put this in a residential area. Some people might not agree with me that it will, but there are no guarantees. I've seen lots of things affect property values that people never thought would when they purchased the property. So, from my aspect, I think it would not be a positive for the area as far as residential. I, I would hope that we would have a facility in St. Charles County, but not necessarily in a residential area. So that was my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wants to speak on this matter? Come on up. Raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And state your name and address for the record.
Ellen Etherington, 2720 South River Road.
Go ahead.
Well, we're okay with the zoning, that's not a problem. We're worried about the property value hideously. They, when we had our meeting, they said, "Well, it might not hurt it, and gee, it might even help it." It was very vague, there are no guarantees. That's a lot of us, that's our retirement. I'm going to be living almost right next door. The building is now moved where it's gonna be almost straight across from my house. There's gonna be no privacy, there will be a lot more traffic. That's forty people, minimum, eighty cars a day, there's a bike trail right there, lots of bicycles go through there. It's just, and if they're not for profit, do they have to pay property tax? And if not, are we left to absorb that? And that's just about all I've got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Come up if you need to do it, otherwise we're gonna be closing this public comment. Come on up. Raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And state your name and address for the record.
Mark Potter, 324 Hawthorne Avenue, St. Charles, Missouri. My family owns the, owns the property right next door where they're building the facility. And I don't feel that this facility would be a good fit for the area. It's a residential park-like area, and it would decrease property values. And they're wanting to build a two-story building, and we have a great view of it if they do that there. And they tried to build this facility down off Prowley Road, I understand, in the city, and it was denied down there in a residential area. I think they oughta build it more in a commercial area, because it is a business, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing that, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public portion of this, and ask the applicant to come up and try to address some of the concerns and questions, and see if the commission has any questions for them. Probably wanna bring the engineer up, and Tom, you probably wanna come up too. So do you have notes on some of the...
I did. And I'll, I'll address the ones that are engineering-related, and I think Tom will probably step up and address some of the operational questions, and those sorts of things, if that's okay.
Sure.
So just kind of going through the notes here, Mr. Yocum's question regarding stormwater runoff and detention. Yes, the site plan, as proposed at this point, would have a retention pond on it. It would be in the front portion of the property, as shown on that, that site plan. So we, as engineers, have to basically follow drainage patterns that are on a piece of property when we start on them. We can grade them and put buildings on them, parking lots. Essentially, our water still has to run off of your property the same place it ran off before, I can't change the drainage pass. We are required by county ordinances, and I think staff will support that, to control that rate of runoff, control the water that's running off, so that we are not increasing the rate of runoff for the water leaving our site. It sounds that, in listening to Mr. Yocum talk, that there's some existing problems in that creek that I think maybe would need to be talked about or addressed with staff, even if this project doesn't move forward. But we are required, as engineers, to meet the stormwater runoff requirements, which do not increase the rate of runoff or flow leaving our site. I don't know how to address it any further than that at this point, other than we're required to follow those regulations like, like any new development. There was a question that was brought up regarding parking. I think I'll let Tom address the reason for the parking. The way the building is oriented, at this point, the building size, the forty-four thousand is what, is what is proposed to happen. In consulting with them, like any client that I've consulted with, when you're building a building, if you think at some point in the future you're going to be successful and want to expand, we would set your building to allow for that expansion. There's not a planned expansion at this time, but if things work and move forward, and Harris House does the things that they hope to be doing, and need to come back and expand that building, they'll be back in front of this commission again, and asking you to approve an expansion to that building. You will have known at that point that they've been in operation, and things, if, if this is successful, move forward, and can decide whether an expansion at that point is reasonable and follows the, the county's intent for that property or not. So, nothing hidden, the parking is set up to allow for functions. As you, as was mentioned, they do have meeting areas and rooms, so there, there are folks that are there beyond the forty staff members, not daily, not, Tom can speak to the frequency, so there is parking for those sorts of events. And then the building, as I mentioned, is set to allow for expansion in the future. They don't have a plan for that at this point, they've, they've planned for what you see in front of you. I think that's all the site issues potentially that I would address at this point, unless there were some other things I missed that you think I should address, other than I'd ask Tom to come back up and talk through some of the operational questions.
I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
On that parking area, too, I guess it's either east or north, now is that, what is the topography there? Is that draining back toward that retention pond?
So, so the high on the property essentially is about where the building is proposed to sit, in looking at, in looking at the site there. So where our, where our building is proposed to sit is, is about on the high portion, we are just a little...
One lot over, where the old Zimmer house is.
There you go. Okay, so we, we sit right about there. So where we're proposing to set the building is in front of where the existing house sits on the Zimmer property now, in front, when I say in front, I mean toward Arena Parkway. So the contour lines, if you can see them on there, the high runs just there. So to answer your question, yes, that parking facility would drain toward the front, be retained in that retention pond, and then released, as that currently drains, then under Arena Parkway, through a pipe and into the creek that Mr. Yocum was, was speaking of.
So with the retention pond, does that diffuse the, the speed of the water coming out, or what exactly does that do with, with the water flow?
It does exactly that, sir. It takes, when you put down that hard surface of your creek, you've got more, you've got water that's not soaking into the ground, so there's a volume of water that's directed into that pond. There's an metering structure that's on that that allows it to leave at a slower rate, a reasonable rate that the creek can accept, and those are the calculations that we have to work through with county staff in terms of our detention requirements and release rates, so...
So is that, is there, is there like a pipe or something that's raised, that it has to get to that level before it will diffuse?
Yes, typical, yeah, a lake, you would have some sort of structure, just as you mentioned, they would have some sort of control or outflow structure.
Okay, that's what I'm wondering.
Yeah, so...
It will retain, it's not gonna diffuse everything. There'll be a certain amount that'll be retained by the...
Yes.
Structure.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Is there, we asked earlier, I think Kevin asked earlier, about the access to the entryway there?
Yeah.
Is anything gonna happen with that? That's really a tough entryway, the way it is right now. I mean, I mean, I'm, you know, it's, it's on a curve, going around on the Arena Parkway there, and it's not really very wide, and, you know, I don't know, it just seems to me that's, it's, it's a little bit difficult to pull in and out of there. Is anything gonna happen with that?
So you're, you're talking about where the, where South River Road currently connects to Arena Parkway?
Right. Where you, where you take a right turn or a left, if you're, I, I was going northbound on Arena Parkway, and I missed the turn. I had to come back because I missed it, and, but it's, it's just, there's just not much there, you know, it's, it's a small little turnoff, and if you're gonna have people, forty, fifty, sixty cars a day going in and out of there, it's, I don't know, it could be an issue.
Yeah, I mean, if there, and, and again, we haven't, we haven't studied or done details of what that drive looked, if it's, it would have to meet county requirements for a two-lane road, for allowed, to allow traffic in both directions, both in and out. If there are improvements that need to be made to that approach of those entryways, that'll be part of our, our site plans with the county. But, yeah, we haven't gotten that far in the details. We're, we're working through this first step here to see if it's, it's a project that can be supported and fits in the county.
Right. And along with that, what, I think the concern is too, is traffic goes fast along Arena Parkway there. And for people to be coming from a dead stop to not have good sightlines, I think that is something of concern. My opinion.
Well noted.
Any other questions for that?
All right, I'll let Tom address some of the other questions.
Okay, thanks. Can we pull up my PowerPoint again?
Because I did have
I have a couple of questions just so you...
Okay.
Do you guys have to get a certificate of need from the state mental health organization? You know, like hospitals have to do?
Um...
You don't have, it's just a license to...
It's just a license. Usually, if you're CARF certified, they don't even come in and inspect. But I did notify Department of Mental Health what we're planning to do, and they're good with it.
And then, are there any current similar facilities in St. Charles right now that do what you guys do?
No.
Okay.
No, there's either state-funded, there's just nothing.
No overnight stay?
No. Really, the closest ones that you'll find probably are in Chicago, Memphis, maybe Kansas City. There is one that's similar to what we do on the other side of Columbia.
Boonville.
Boonville, okay. But there's really, we're pretty unique in what we do and how we do.
And then one last question for me is, your facility you have on South, South Broadway, how have the residents handled that facility? Have they had any issues with you guys, or...
Residents like us. The aldermen will endorse us. Police department likes us. Fire department next door like, everybody likes us. So if you do a background check on us, I say go for it, and, and I think you'll like it.
Okay.
One gentleman made the comment that you had tried to originally locate this in the city of St. Charles.
I think the gentleman said something like Crowley Road.
Crowley Lane.
Is that, is that true, guys? Because I don't know, I, that's not familiar to me.
This is your first time presenting into St. Charles, coming into St. Charles?
It's our first time actually going for something. Yeah.
Okay.
So, I am no real estate guru, but I did anticipate that the property value thing, and I did, what I think is, is the, a fair due diligence as much as I could on this issue. And let me see if I can, I did prepare a couple of things. So what I did was, I did contact a real estate organization in St. Charles that I, I don't know anybody in that organization and still haven't met face-to-face with anybody. And it is the Westover Group. And I asked them to take a look at what impact we'd have on real estate values if we come into this area. They did a study where they looked and analyzed what impact was going in the residential areas around Center Point. And I did pull up, this is a copy of their, of their letter, and that's included in the packet that I'll provide you all in paper. But basically, they're saying, the Westover Group is saying, we're not going to have an impact on property values, on residential property values. This is Center Point, and I just wanted to pull it up because you see all the residential property around them. And this is what he was looking at comps on, if, that he will refer to in this letter. And he said that it doesn't make a difference based upon the actual resales that he's checked. We also checked downtown St. Charles, around the streets of St. Charles area. I believe it is, right here is where Bridgeway's Addiction Treatment Center is, and has been for a long time. And I think right behind it is the juvenile detention area. And it didn't stop streets of St. Louis from coming in. And if you look, or streets of St. Charles, and if you look right across the street, you will see apartments, brand-new, that went in. That's a swimming pool right there, directly across the street. And they seem to be doing very well on the property value side. So that's really all I can say to cover that. And the other issue that I heard was the parking lot. You know, we do some events every year. For example, we usually do a couple of seminars for mental health professionals in the area on addiction treatment issues. And so it's for LPCs, LCSWs, psychologists, psychiatrists. And I may get 200 to 300 people that want to come into those events, but I don't have the space for that. So I take whatever I can take. So that kind of event, I can use additional parking for and would intend to. What else? Once a year, I have an alumni dinner where I have former clients come in. I have lots of former clients, and we can't fit everybody in. So, but there, there are events like this that occasionally we do where the extra parking I need, a little more than just for the daily staff. So that's the best response I can give you on that one. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
I would stipulate, make it that Harris House, you guys do a wonderful job, and I think you've proven it with your PowerPoint. But I've taken several notes here, and everybody seems to say, why here, St. Charles County's got a lot of open ground. There's a lot of places you could put this white wood, because that's my compelling concern. And just as a sidebar, my daughter worked for a place that was state-funded, but it was in the middle of Quiver River State Park. And one of the things they had, they didn't have to put a fence around it. Nobody would leave because they didn't know their way out, basically.
Right.
But the same thing, they didn't have problems with neighbors or property values or anything like that. There's a lot of ground in St. Charles County. So what's my compelling reason that it has to be here?
It's, it's a good question. The, the answer is, we like to be an urban treatment center because most of our clients are urban people. And you take them out away from the urban environment, that's not real world for most of our clients. That's in a little Camelot area that isn't real. We like to keep them where, in an area where we can have easy access to AA meetings in the area, so that if we load up a group of clients and take them like we typically do on Saturday night to an AA meeting, that there's something close and nearby. And I know there are some AA meetings in the area. But again, I'll say, this is the midpoint of where our clients come from, for the past three years in this program. And we have an urban treatment center. That's really what we are. And we are not, we are not a country treatment center. It's not that we couldn't be, but this is easy access for family members. We do have, as somebody pointed out, two nights a week where families come in. Everything says that if we can get the family involved, we're going to have a much better chance of success with the client. My clients are urban clients typically, or suburban. And that's why we're here.
Any other questions for Tom?
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks.
We're going to go ahead and close the public meeting. No, no more, no more public comments, sorry. We're going to close that, the portion of it now and bring it back before the commission. Any questions? Want to ask staff, or, I guess one of them is the Platte stuff, when they put their thing before us, they can't add building, and they have to bring that before us, again, if they add a building to the location, unless they put it in the original Platte plan. Is that correct?
Assuming this would be approved.
Right.
A, a next step would be that they would need to submit a site plan for staff review and approval. And whatever would be approved as part of the county council consideration would have to be, I'm sorry, the site plan would have to be substantially in conformance with whatever plan would be approved by the county council. So if it's not substantially in conformance, they'd have to come back for this body into the county council.
I got you.
So there could be some minor deviations. But any, any major change or anything that would affect the qualities that we're talking about, affects neighbors, things like that, we need to come back.
Okay.
I do have a question too. And it's, it is, again, about the egress and ingress into that. Now that, since that's not physically on their property, who in the county would determine what has to be done in terms of making that analysis and the, if need be, improvements to the egress and ingress?
Well, there's, there's, there's two groups. One is the Development Review Division. There's an engineer that's, a licensed engineer that's employed by the Development Review Division. And then second, review also by the County Highway Department. And then within our subdivision regulations, there's specific things that would trigger a study or report. And so we would review it in light of, of that, those requirements, whether or not that it would trigger a traffic study, for instance, or any outside improvements.
Is that something we could have as a condition? Could we have that as a condition of the approval?
If it... I could say generally that...
Is the question, can we make it a condition that the staff do this?
Right, with this...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is more not involved with this at all? Bring for us an egress?
I would say broadly, a general question is, you can recommend conditions be attached to any approval. Those conditions would need to relate back to the criteria and that you'll find in your staff report for conditional use permits. There's five different considerations that, that you'll find about, for instance, would the conditional use permit be detrimental to or endanger public health, safety, or the general welfare? So if, just speaking broadly here, if you felt like that it would be detrimental to or endanger public health, safety, or the general welfare, I think you can recommend conditions in those, in those regards.
Because right now, it's zone residential.
Right, yeah. Half the property is zone single-family residential, half of it's zone...
My point is, someone could come in and develop a residential now without having to come here. And the ingress and egress from Arena Parkway would not be an issue.
If they wanted to develop subdivision Platte, it would come before this body, and then the subdivision Platte would fall under those same triggering
Yeah.
requirements that I spoke of.
But that subdivision Platte would not, it would be away from the ingress and egress point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Commissioner Cleary, would you want there to be some condition that if staff requires a traffic study
Yeah, I think that would be
that's to be performed?
Right. A traffic study, just to...
Get maybe to what you're
Yeah.
concerned about. You can add that as a, a condition.
I'd like to state it the way you did. I can't, I'm not quite so...
Let's hope I can remember.
So do we... Do we want to put that in there then? Do we need a vote on that?
You can make a motion.
Yeah.
You can make the public motion.
Yes, it would require an amendment, so there'd have to be some formality.
Hold on, I got to get another sheet out for this one. Thanks. Okay. I have a motion to add another condition for a traffic study on this.
If staff requires.
If staff requires it, yes, thank you. Mr. Cleary?
Yes, I made that motion.
Do I have a second? Okay, we have a motion, a second. Mr. Setley, how do you vote on that?
I vote yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Fromm votes yes. Mr. Cleary?
Yes.
Mr. Leonard? Oh, Mr. Leonard's not here today. Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Okay. So any other further discussion on this item? You've added a new condition recommendation to it?
Can I make a...
Go ahead.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yep.
I'd like to suggest, if you're okay with this, actually voting, taking two votes, one on the zoning, and then one on the conditional use permit. And then, because the conditional use permit includes certain recommended conditions.
I see what you're saying.
Okay.
Technically, they're two different considerations. One's a legislative act, the other is an administrative act.
So you want to do the conditional
Zoning.
Zoning first, I mean, sorry.
Please.
Okay. So do I have a motion? Or is there any other discussion on it before we do it?
Make a motion to...
Mr. Griffin?
Zoning.
Okay. Do I need a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Setley?
I vote yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Fromm votes yes. Mr. Cleary?
Yes.
Mr. Leonard? Mr. Leonard is not here, I keep forgetting. Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Eight, nothing. Okay. Now we're going to vote on conditional use permit.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the conditional use permit as amended.
Second.
Mr. Ellis, Mr. Griffin. Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Cleary?
Yes.
Mr. Fromm votes yes. Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Setley?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Eight, zero. So, this has been voted on and approved. Just so you guys know, June 12th, you go before the county council, do the same thing. It, it comes before them twice in a bill. So you have two chances to go before them also. And we're going to let you have a few minutes to clear the room, if you would, so we move on to the next agenda question.
If they need a traffic study, they have three weeks or whatever. They could tell
I would let them clear the room. Let them clear. I would, no, you guys can stay. You can stay. Yeah. Can we get that thumb drive out of there for him? Yeah, thank you. And you want to bring up the next item before the commission? Thank you. Well, thank goodness for that. I went to last night's. Yeah.
Oh, four, nothing.
Oh, wow.
You always go to the...
I know. It's ridiculous. Cardinals, four, nothing. All right, thank you. Okay, our next item before us, application is CUP 17-04. The owner is Keven Brothers Storage, LLC. The applicant is Bax Engineering Company Incorporated. The current zoning is C2 commercial, general commercial district, and the area is 3.9 acres. The location is on the southwest corner of Highway Z and Buckner Road. It is in Council District 2. Staff? Do you guys hear her back there? She wants that PowerPoint put up. Thank you.
Thank you. The applicant on this application is asking, requesting a conditional use permit for storage of boats and RVs. This is located on the southwest corner of Highway Z and Buckner Road, as you can see. The applicant currently has, has business to the north of Buckner Road here. You can see where my arrow is. And also to the south of this property right here. As you can see, it's already zoned C2, and they are asking for the conditional use permit. Staff, again, we review the conditional use permit requirements, ensure that it, there's maintenance and operation of the conditional use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare. And we also make sure that the, the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity is not affected. Staff has reviewed the concept plan on their development, and it is, we do find that the proposed usage of this property for, for storage of boats and RVs is appropriate. They do show a gravel surface with sufficient lighting and fencing. And in order to keep that gravel surface, they will have to ask for special permission from the director of planning and zoning. The proposed development adjacent to this existing storage facility is similarly gated, lighted, and fenced. And this will be similar along the Highway Z frontage, similar landscaping and gating and fencing. The ordinance will require buffering along the boundaries with residential uses. As you can see on this, on the aerial view, there is a storage facility to the north, and, and no residential use on the agriculturally zoned property to the east of that. Consequently, it is up to the applicant at this point to buffer with landscaping along the north side, along Buckner Road. Based on this, staff is recommending approval with the conditional use permit conditions that we usually put on, a site plan indicating compliance with their concept plan is required. No conditional use shall be active until all conditions of the approval have been met. And if the conditional use is not in place and in active use within two years from the date of granting, planning, and zoning, shall declare it null and void.
Any letters?
There are no letters.
Okay. Any questions of staff?
Are they going to be required to pave, pave that or not?
I can tell you, most of the time, for the storage lots, they request that it be some sort of, like crushed stone or gravel surface. And when they turn in a site plan, they'll typically explain how they're going to treat the, for dust. And it might be calcium chloride treatment or something like that periodically. But I expect they probably would be asking for gravel or crushed stone. And I think one of the reasons is because asphalt, for instance, if you park a vehicle on asphalt for a long time, it, in, with the, the heat and the sun... on asphalt for a long time, it, with the, the heat and the sun, it starts to sink in. Anyway, that's just one thing that happens with the storage of vehicles on asphalt, or storage of heavy things on asphalt.
Any other questions of staff? Applicant in the room? Want to come up? Raise your right hand for me. You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And state your name and address for the record.
My name is Gerald Keven. Live at 760 Hillen Camp in Weldon Spring.
Go ahead, Gerald.
And as, as you can see, on the north side, we do operate a storage facility there. On the south side, I wish I had a current picture of it, but, and I don't know if you can see where the, the actual next property line is. That one is currently two point something acres to the south. There you are. Thank you. And that one, I wish I had an aerial view of it at this time, because we're extremely proud of it. We started out with 130 spaces. The last time when we had this was, when we opened it, was just this past November. And I was in front of the Planning and Zoning in the county council earlier, I think it was last May, about a year ago. And, and I was telling the, the need of it. Right now, as of about two and a half weeks ago, we have 109, or 111 customers in there at this time, and there's 130 spaces. So, that's the reason why I didn't do it at that particular time, because I thought it would be two years, and I thought that the CUP would be canceled. That's the reason why I didn't do the whole entire property at that particular time. But otherwise, we've, as you can tell, 111 customers, everybody loves what we're doing out there, as far as with all the customers that we have. Otherwise, as far as landscaping, who's the county councilman out there? If you have somebody to help me out?
Two, it's Brazel.
Yes, Joe Brazel, sorry. But he had it to where we, we put in three rows of white pines on, on a mounded cert, or, I guess, a berm, and just to make sure that, you know, as soon as they grow in, then they're going to be actually like the other side that has a lot of trees and very good screening. But is there any questions that you guys would have? Yes.
Would they enter and exit off of Z?
That one is currently off of Highway Z, and the actual entrance will be from the existing property. So, there will not be another entrance put in. It'll be the same entrance that we have currently.
Are there utilities on the property?
There are no, there are not sewers. There are, there is water. I'm not sure about any other services that are there. And also, to be quite honest with you, with, this is, what we're looking at would be hopefully a temporary use, temporary meaning that at one point, I'm not sure how this will work out, but Buckner Road, I think, is, is maybe extending over to Highway N. So, we're hoping that this would be something else at some point.
Yeah, that's, that was gonna be my next question, is do you see this as the highest and best use?
No.
Obviously, on a temporary basis, perhaps, but not long term.
That is exactly right.
That's what I was thinking too.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. We're gonna go ahead and open up to the public. Is there anybody in the room that wants to speak on this, is here in the public, for or against? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public portion of it and bring it back before the commission.
I can just say, I think, most of us, we've seen a lot of their developments, and I think they've been first class, so I'm in, I'm in favor of it.
Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Mr. Setley, a second? Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Cleary?
Yes.
Mr. Fromm votes yes. Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Setley?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Eight, zero. Thank you.
Our next item up before the commission is FWK 1711, a fireworks CUP. The applicant is Tom Underwood. The property owner is Purvis P. and Anita E. Banks Trust, Robert and Sharon Bell. The zoning is C2 commercial, general commercial district, location on the south side of Westwood Drive at South Breeze Lane and adjoining South Highway 94 near Weldon Spring. It's in Council District 3.
Staff?
You may recall that, once a year, the Planning, Zoning Commission approves regulations for firework stands. Typically, we review them in March of each year, but often, we'll have a few more that will come in after that, that March meeting, and this is one of those cases. In fact, this came along recently, where we had the request for a temporary firework stand, and by Tom Underwood is the applicant. It's on Westwood Drive, and it's located along Westwood Drive between Westwood and Highway 94 at Breeze Lane. And I would remind everyone that we're talking about a temporary, request is for a temporary firework stand, so the use could only be there between June 25th of this year and July 6th. So, we're talking about a few weeks' time period. Let's see here. I don't know if there's a way to show some photographs, but.
You got a couple of them in the packet.
Okay. The property itself is zoned commercial. Right across the street is zoned residential.
Do you want to show photographs?
Actually, I have some in here, yeah, that are on.
Oh, on the drive.
Yeah, on the drive. If you want to click on the folder for firework stands. Yeah, that's it.
What do we do before technology?
Actually, show the photographs themselves, if you would. All right, this is kind of a close-up shot, but across the lot that we're, we're talking about, but we're talking about at the very west end of this long skinny parcel, and right now, there's a driveway existing right at the very end of this lot, and it's basically at the corner of, of Breeze and Westwood. And so, it's an existing driveway. They're not asking for any new driveway. Quite frankly, that's not a very good location at all for driveway, for, for any commercial reason, just because the configuration of how you get onto Breeze and Highway 94. Basically, there's a couple of stop signs there, and it's in, frankly, it's a little above an awkward intersection, and this driveway's right next to that. Having said that, it's an existing driveway that's approved for commercial usage, and I think that's part of the concerns of neighbors who live right across the street. If you look just to the north, across Westwood Drive.
Yeah.
For instance, there's a circle drive with some existing residences. I think that's what some of the concerns are about access on this property. Ellie, if you could kind of put your, point your, where that driveway is that we're talking about, yeah, right there, and then just to the left of that, or west, that's, that's Breeze, and that's how you get onto and off of Highway 94 to this property. So, they're proposing to have this tent located towards the east, yeah, right about there, next to where, or just below where the, the billboard's located. So, I, I guess with this, with, with that, it's for your consideration, whether you want to approve or not approve a temporary firework stand at this location. And I would say that if you would approve it, that you would do so subject to the, the standard fireworks regulations that you've already enacted.
Any other questions for staff?
Did we have a stand here last year at this location?
Not last year, no.
Have we ever had a stand there, or anybody come before us? I don't.
I'm not sure, not to my knowledge.
Okay. And do we have, we have letters on this?
Yes, we do. We have letters from, we have a letter of concern from Dan Young, and then we have letters of opposition from Ones Anonymous, then also Joanne Stewart, John and Lori Saul, Mark Skellington, Virgil and Pat Schlue, and Jerry Grammer. Those are all letters of opposition.
Okay. Is the applicant in the room? Did they come tonight? I guess they did not. All right, we're gonna go ahead and close the applicant portion. Does Tom have some firework stands in St. Charles, right? Does he?
Tom Underwood?
Yeah.
I'd say I'm not familiar with that name.
Okay, that's a good question. All right, all right. And he didn't come tonight?
No.
Okay.
Apparently not.
Okay. All right. All right, we're gonna, since the applicant's not here, we're gonna go ahead and open up the public. Anybody who wants to speak on this matter can come before us. Don't forget to fill out a speaker's card. Try to keep your comments for three minutes. That is a long time. Raise your right hand for me. You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And state your name and address for the record.
My name is Don Licklider. I live at 4950 Samuelman Road in Weldon Spring.
Go ahead, Don. Go ahead.
And here's, here's my piece. We've, we've had the intersection where Breeze crosses Highway 94. In the last four or five years, we're talking about 50 accidents there. It's, it's, it's a terribly congested area in the center of the road, and you're gonna, if we approve this fireworks tent, you're gonna increase the traffic flow through that intersection. I've had two people die there in the last five years, you know, through accidents, so I'm just appealing from a safety standpoint. It just, to me, it would just be mind-boggling to approve this fireworks stand, just from safety. I don't have a problem with fireworks stands, but it's, it's a safety issue. I've been trying to get a stoplight put in there for, I know at least 15, I am the mayor of Weldon Spring, but I've been trying to get a stoplight put in there for 15 years, and mo, we don't have, you know, the mo dot just won't work with us.
Sure.
So, anyway, that's my story.
Thanks, Don. Raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And state your name and address for the record.
Tammy Hempen, 1605 Fairwood Forest Drive, St. Peters, Missouri, 63376.
Thanks, go ahead, Tammy.
I'm Tammy Hempen, I'm the executive director of Breeze Park, which is the senior living community that is directly across Highway 94 at South Breeze. And Mayor Licklider referred to 50 accidents in the last five years. That's from 2010 to 2014, and that's from the Missouri Department of Transportation. Forty-two of those accidents are directly related to that specific intersection. Since I've been at Breeze Park, I've had five employees and four residents involved in a serious accident in that intersection. And then, there's also an additional three that happened this past 12 months. The intersection itself, people do not know how to navigate that intersection crossing the highway. They jump out into the intersection, they cannot see cars coming when there are cars turning left to go opposite us on South Breeze. So, just for safety standard, we request that this be denied.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, Tammy.
Mm-hmm.
Raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And state your name and address for the record.
Chris Sander, 1234 Piedmont Circle, St. Charles, Missouri, 63304.
Go ahead, Chris.
So, I live at Montecito Terrace Community, it's a condo at 94, near Mid Rivers, and then I operate a firework tent across the street by Gold's Gym there. So, I've operated in Weldon Spring for 10 years, and I've had three locations, and I'm actually here to speak against the location, not that it'd be competitive, because there's, there's about 20 tents near me anyways, but I've looked around, and I've had tents, like the one I'm at now is at Westwood on the same street in 94, and then I've had one by Center Point Hospital on 94, directly access off 94, and then over on Highway 40, but that was an option. I looked at this place like six years ago in my 10 years of doing it there, and I was like, there's overhead power lines there, and the traffic is terrible there. My grandma actually lived across the street at Breeze Park, but, so I'm familiar with that intersection. But I went through like the Cotterville Fire Code that I do with inspection state fire codes, and I was gonna read off some of the distances required by those. So, even if it got approved or passed here, I'd never applied for that location, because I knew it would never be approved by state or Cotterville, but you can't light fireworks within 300 feet of a tent. So, if you have a 30 by 60 tent, that's, what, I don't know, 330 feet by, 360 feet around it, and there's at least 10 to 12 houses in that area that can legally light fireworks, so that's one issue. You can't have any cars parked within 10 feet of the tent, and 30 by 60 tent, that's, the tent spikes are another five feet on each side, so that's a 40 by 70 foot area. And then, no vehicles would be 10 foot on all sides of 40 by 70, 60 by 90, and that, there's not even enough space there to have a no-vehicle 30 by 60, 90 area without getting into the easement of the streets. You can't have a storage unit within 50 feet of a firework tent, and then he's got three drawn on there within 10 feet to the right, to the left, or by the other driveway there on the north, and then there's one on the, it says a sign, and a trailer on the southwest corner there. So, that's like three violations right there. You can't have a tent within 50 feet of public roads, and there's one about 40 feet to the north and a highway 50 feet to the south. You can't have a tent within 20 feet of driveways, and there's two, and not to mention the driveway on the, the side there by Breeze Park, it's blocked by vehicles, so they don't have anybody driving in there, because it does cause accidents, so there's a vehicle blocking it in that picture, and that car, or some car's been there for at least five years, because you can't use that. So, having trailers over here, you're not gonna be able to use the other way, so the only way in there is that dangerous driveway. You can't have any structures within 100 feet, so there's two billboards, and then just off the picture to the right is the actual sales car building, that's within 100 feet. The houses across the street are about 110 feet, but if you got a tent area, it's, it's like, is the fire department gonna have a problem with it? Not the Cotterville, but also state. And then, you can't have a childcare center within 500 feet, but I would consider the Dog Day Care Center number one. And then, the Breeze Park is a, how many residents are there?
Three twenty.
It's draped across, out of the picture, and it's gotta be like 400 feet, and that's, that's an issue, so. And you can't have it within 10 feet of a retail property, which, I don't know.
So, Chris, we kinda got it. We understand you know the rules.
So.
If there's anything else you wanna?
There's never been a tent there, I just wanted to add that.
Okay.
Because of all these reasons, but, and another major one is like Ameren power lines.
Okay, we got you, we got you.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for your time.
Anybody else want to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we're gonna go ahead and close the public portion of it and bring it back, back before this commission.
I can just tell you, personal experience, my parents, we brought them up from Florida. The only place they could get in was Breeze Park. Bought a villa there for my mother, so we traveled that quite extensively until we moved them to Delmar Gardens. Across the street, McDonald Douglas used to have their radio control before all those houses built in, but that intersection is very bad, especially when I drive home tonight, I think most of those accidents are probably T-boned. When you're heading towards Highway 40, the people in the left-hand lane, they think they're gonna beat it, and you just see brakes light up. I don't think eastbound traffic coming towards St. Charles is bad, but any increase of traffic, in my opinion, there is not gonna be a good thing.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve FWK 17-11.
I'll second.
Mr. Ellis and Mr. Griffin. Mr. Cleary?
No.
Mr. Fromm, going to abstain? Mr. Coon?
No.
Mr. McDonald?
No.
Mr. Setley?
No.
Mr. Griffin?
No.
Mr. McBride?
No.
Mr. Ellis?
No.
That'd be seven, zero, seven, and one. That one fails. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next application is preliminary Platte 17-05. The applicant is Shane Riffle, and the owner is Gilbert S. Riffle, a Riffale engineer, is Cardinal Surveying and Mapping, and the property zoning is A Agricultural District. The area is 10.16 acres, and the number of lots is two. The location is on the west corner of Church Road and Lindsey Lane near St. Paul. The location is on the west corner of Church Road and Lindsey Lane near St. Paul, and it's in Council District 1. Anything from the staff on this?
You should have received, I believe today, revised, updated plat that shows, it meets all of our comments except for one small thing having to do with the name, how it's labeled at the top. But other than that, it's been addressed, including the fact that there's an access easement. We asked them to move it farther away from that intersection, because in the first version that they submitted was in your packet at first, the access easement was kind of a dogleg intersection there. We asked them to move it, and it's now about 70 feet farther south. So if you're just talking about two lots, that's 70-foot difference, it's good enough.
Okay.
Now, one thing I, just one question I have, if the applicant's engineer is here, one of our engineers asked a question today. Now that they've moved the access easement down, there's like a hairpin turn for that driveway that's going to come, like a S turn to driveway. And the engineer asked a question, would this allow vehicles like a trash truck, if necessary, to maneuver down the driveway? Or is that even necessary? I mean, is someone going to haul the trash from the lot behind down to the street? Or are they expecting the trash trucks to drive down that driveway that makes two of the, two hairpin turns? That's my only question.
Any questions of staff on this? Is the applicant in here? Want to come up? Raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth and nothing about the truth?
I do.
And state your name and address for the record.
Shane Riffle, 306 Capri Drive, O'Fallon, Missouri, 63366.
Go ahead, Shane.
So with the, I spoke to the highway department this morning about the drive, so we did move that farther south as they recommended. The trash trucks won't be an issue, because we will be bringing that to Lindsey Lane.
Oh, you're bringing it up to the front?
Yeah, we're going to bring it up to the front. That's the, there's a handful of people that live off Lindsey Lane, and that's exactly what they do, so.
Okay. Any other questions for Shane? Seen none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the room that wants to speak on this matter? We're going to open up to the public. Seen none, but we're going to go ahead and close that portion of it, bring it back before the commission.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Mr. Griffin?
I'll second.
Mr. Setley?
Mr. Setley.
Mr. Setley, yes.
No, hold on. Sorry. First and second, that's first and second. Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yeah.
Mr. Setley?
Still yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Cleary?
Yes.
Mr. Fromm votes yes. That's eight, zero. That one passes. Thank you. All right, last item before us is a preliminary plat 1704. The engineer is Metron Surveying and Layout Company. The owner and developer is Big Hill LLC. And the planning, the property is zoning is RR, single-family residential district, three-acre minimum lot size. The area is 21.13 acres. The number of lots is five, and location is on the west side of Highway Y, approximately 1,675 feet south of Mack Lane.
Did we have a vote to take this off the table?
Yeah. We did. Early on.
Yeah, we did. We did that first thing. Yeah, yeah. And it's in Council District 1. Staff?
All right, if you do remember last fall, this was rezoned to RR by rezoning application 16-14. Staff has reviewed the plat. They are asking for five lots on that lot, on that plat. They have addressed all of our comments.
Is the applicant going to come before us? It's up to you. You don't have to.
I'm going to give you a barbecue, nobody's here.
Raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth and nothing about the truth?
Yes.
State your name and address for the record.
Rocky Morgan, 115 Kendrick Hill in St. Peters.
Go ahead, Rocky.
We're just looking to get this finalized so we can get the houses started.
Yeah.
We feel it's a very good project. And it's all basically family building, so.
Any questions for Rocky? Thank you, Rocky.
Thank you.
And is there anybody in the room that wants to speak about this from the public?
Gail.
Gail?
Gail?
Seen none, we'll go ahead and close the public portion of this and bring it back before the commission. Can we get a motion?
Moved.
Second. Ellis, Mr. Cleary. All right, Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Setley?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Cleary?
Yes.
Mr. Fromm votes yes. Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen, eight, zero. What are the minutes before us? Need a motion on the minutes, except from last meeting?
I make a motion.
And second?
Second.
All in favor, so you know by eye?
Eye.
Motion carries. Just on another note, before we close out the meeting, we do have two new employees. I think that Robert would like to introduce them. Welcome.
Ellie Marr, I don't know if you remember, but actually used to make presentations planning and zoning commission some years ago, but switching roles and now switching back. So you'll probably see Ellie Marr a lot more, county planner. And then she's been a great member of our staff for many years, since the 1990s, let's say.
Since 99.
99, okay.
Since 99.
Now, not quite so long. Anissa Kumero is our newest member and is part of our clerical team now, and she's been with us about a month, maybe six weeks, so. Anyway.
One month tomorrow.
One month tomorrow, okay.
She's still here, huh?
I'm not running yet.
Come, come one of these meetings you might. Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I have a motion. Anything new or old that we need to speak about? If not, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Eye.
Thank you.
I didn't bring us a goodbye.